I'd like to call this special meeting for the Lackawanna City Council to order. Today's date is June 9th, 2022. It is approximately 12:04 PM. And the agenda, we won't have a caucus. The agenda was as posted. First item would be City Council discuss recent events at Just Plan on IT LLC and status of respective business license. Number two, work session to discuss possible amendments to the City of Lackawanna Municipal Code, Chapter 88, Business Registration thereof. And three, a work session to discuss the public speaking portion of our meeting. Before we begin, I would ask callerized for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. City Clerk, would you take through all?
Absolutely. Counsel, Councilmember Muflahe was excused. Anderson?
Here.
Moretti?
Here.
Councilmember Surlick was excused. Rannau?
Here.
Department head, Law?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. And just for the record, I know it's not on the agenda, but for consideration of the council and based on substantial work having been done by the city attorney, to consider the state authorized option to have an appearance by one of the council members via video conference or something relative or related thereto. I know councilperson Muflahe contacted us this morning again, asking if it would be possible to appear by telephone. And in the last meeting, she asked if she could appear by Zoom since we had, and my answer was, my understanding is since we voted to resume in-person meetings, the only thing New York State allows absent passing the considered legislation, state only allows for in-person appearances. So this may be another impetus for us to consider passing that option. And we need to keep in mind, though, that in our city clerk, who's done more than us also, we appreciate that, is that it does require additional record-keeping and other items to add on to the responsibilities of the clerk's office. So I would just add that I think this might be an appropriate consideration for all the members of the council. And to that end, Mr. City Clerk, do you want to go over the agenda?
Yeah, these are all council items, communications from the council. The first one, as you stated, as most everybody in this room is aware, there was an incident at one of our local businesses, and they were basically temporarily shut down until such times the council can meet and act as to whether or not they're going to pull the business registration from that respective business. And of course, if that does happen, I'm not saying how the council will vote, but if it does happen, the affected business would be entitled to a hearing. But I don't know if the city attorney wants to address that further?
Mr. City Clerk?
No, I mean, I assume they'd be entitled to due process rights. We'd have to schedule something.
I think we've had this before in another business. And it seems, as far as from my perspective, that the individual who had been in charge of leasing that location had been on the receiving end of another license revocation in the past for property directly across the street in the former Lackawanna Hotel. And for similar reasons, except it wasn't as violent, but it required a number of police appearances. And for the record, although the license had been pulled after the incident, it came to light that the individual in question actually had a permanent license to operate and wasn't under a temporary provisional license, as we were under the impression. And that was a result of an administration, administrative oversight, nothing more, but it was the best information we had at the time. And I do believe it was appropriate action anyway. Do any of the other council members wish to be heard on this issue? To that end, I'm going to make a motion that this council entertain and rescind the authorization of this individual, not only for the business license for the location in question, but any other business locations operated by this individual immediately, and also pending a final resolution and determination by the law department pursuant to a question of due process and probable cause. I believe that hearing is to be conducted by the law department. Are there any seconds?
Where are the seconds? All right. So I have a motion by Mr. Rannau, second by Mr. Moretti, to revoke the business license of Just Plan on it, LLC, located at 1212 Abbott Road, and also any associated businesses under the same owner's name pursuant to whatever action that the business owner seems necessary to challenge that. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Item 30, which we know is a quorum?
Item number two.
So I'll do the official letter. Jeff gives me a certified copy of the council's resolution, and I'll advise the individual if any of the due process rights are.
Thank you, Rick. And a question, Mr. City Clerk, do we need to include in the language of that motion directing the city attorney to take appropriate action?
We certainly can, and we'll hear it.
Yeah, I would like to include that action, that language.
Okay, so then the motion will be amended to restate the closing of that business, the revocation of the business license, and refer to the law department for appropriate action.
Should vote again.
I'm just going to say we'll re-vote on that, the new language in that motion. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Item number two is a work session to discuss possible amendments to the City of Lackawanna Municipal Code, Chapter 88, Business Registration of. This is obviously a more informal type of conversation amongst the council and department heads regarding the current policy in place and some potential changes. Now, I've had conversation with, I think, most of you, and I've also had conversation with the Director of Public Safety when this other resident that we're referring to came to light. According to Section 88, the Business Registration section, it goes on to state that a provisional license, which is what we thought we had at the time, may be pulled by the issuing agent, the issuing authority, which was my office. So Director Wolf got with me. I went in on Saturday morning. We typed up a letter doing just that. However, during that, it would seem appropriate, we'll obviously get your all opinion on this, but it would seem appropriate that there should be additional language in there with regards to pulling a provisional, and we'll get to the regular in a minute, but pulling a provisional, that authority should be granted, I would think, to, at the very least, the Director of Public Safety. Because if something happens at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, and we want something to be shut down right there, it's not realistic to leave it just to the city clerk's office to have the ability to pull that license. So I'd like to see in the language, the city clerk and/or pending exigent circumstances, the city law department can word it with easy fit, to allow authority be granted to the Director of Public Safety, or you could even extend it to the ranking police officer on the scene. However you want to do it, it's you guys decide. Give them the additional authority to make a decision pending council action.
I think that's good, and I would also include language to the effect that exigent circumstances would include any threat to public safety, health, and welfare.
And I think it should extend to the Director of Development as well, as the Public Safety Director.
I think that's a good idea because it gives another option in case other people aren't available. What I'd like to direct the conversation towards at this point, so that we have a chance to discuss thoroughly what the current law provides or code provides, and that is, first of all, the issuance of a provisional license. And my understanding and considerations in allowing a business to open pending a permanent license is that the time it takes for the applicant to go through the necessary steps and procedures sometimes can amount to a number of months, a month, two months, whatever the case may be. And issuing a temporary certificate to operate allows them to open almost immediately pending that time period and a permanent licensing. The question I think that should be before us is whether or not a temporary permit is prudent or is called for under the circumstances. My thoughts are 90% of the applicants, we have no problems with. So for our consideration, is the remaining 10%? Is it wise for us to allow a temporary operating license in the event that two or three months down the road, stuff comes to light, information comes to light that hadn't been present on the application or elsewhere that would require or would cause the licensing entity to deny the license? During that time period, you have an up and running business. So to not issue that license would mean that would, that businessperson has to undergo the expenses and a full shutdown after having opened its doors and operating under supposed legitimate circumstances. Now, you might say, well, that's not our issue, that's the applicant's issue. And I think you're right. The other thing is, if 90% of the applicants are no problems, is what has happened recently and sometimes in the past sufficient enough in our minds to stop the temporary permits to avoid these kinds of situations from happening until that applicant is vetted as best as we can under the circumstances? The thought that comes to mind then is, even if that person waits two or three months to open, and their intent is to lease the property or rent the property, or to have activities on premises like we experienced last weekend, then issuing a temporary permit versus issuing a permanent permit, the truth is going to come to light eventually. It's not going to change the spots on the leopard. If there's going to be a problem, it's going to, there's going to be a problem at the initial stage of the temporary license. And if we avoid the temporary license, the intent of the person occupying the property would come to light at the time of a permanent licensure issue. So do any of the council members want to be heard on that particular issue as to whether or not we should continue with issuing temporary permits? And I would include that request to not only the council members, but to the city clerk, who is the primary entity and has to do the legwork on all this initially, and obviously to John Wolf, Director of Public Safety, and Rick Judith from the law department.
If I can just chime in here before the council speaks, just so that they have a full understanding of how this provisional license works. Provisional licenses, as the council president alluded to, did not exist prior to 2018. And we were running into an issue where it was taking too long for businesses to get registered. And with this administration that's in office now, we're trying to make city business friendly. So we want to encourage businesses here in the City of Lackawanna, so we try to make it easier. And of course, when you do that, there are some things that don't work out as well as you would like. I just want to go over, I did give everybody a copy of the Business Registration, Chapter 88, under 88-4, Sub C. This is the section that we added. It basically says, "Upon receipt of an application for a certificate of business, the city clerk may issue a provisional certificate of business registration, which would allow the applicant to open and operate the business pending approval of the application by the city council." So the provisional is only as good as it takes to get it before the council and the council votes yea or nay. "The provisional certificate of business registration shall remain in effect until the city council approves or rejects the application for business registration. The city clerk shall have the authority to revoke a provisional certificate for business registration pursuant to Section 88-8 of this chapter. The issuance of the provisional certificate shall not relieve the applicant of the obligation to obtain any other necessary licenses and permits that may be required by the board and our county government." So it does refer to Section 88-8, and that is entitled Revocation of Certificate. And in that, it can be revoked for several reasons, and I'll just kind of jump right to that. It says, "If it negatively, adversely affects the public good, welfare, health, safety, and morals, or that the nature, environmental impact, or character of the business is such that it constitutes a danger to the public good, welfare, safety, health, or morals of the City of Lackawanna." So obviously, we're within our rights to pull business registrations for that type of activity. So from my perspective, and the number of provisionals that we've issued without any problems whatsoever, for the small amount that we do have problems, the fact that we do have in place a way to pull the provisional, and it is clearly documented as to why we can pull the provisional, I'm in favor of keeping it. However, I am also in favor of maybe tweaking it or modifying it. And as we discussed earlier, adding others that may have the authority to pull that provisional license, whether it's the director, whether it's the Director of Development, Director of Public Safety, you know, what have you.
Can I ask a question?
Can I just start a suggestion before you do that? What if we included a requirement that, under the provisional license and even beyond that, the person occupying the applicant is required to post a bond?
Well, I mean, that's one thing.
Could sacrifice that bond in the event they don't do what they're supposed to do.
The statute says right now that you may issue a provisional. It doesn't say that you have to.
Correct.
Have there been instances where you haven't issued them?
Yes, but they've been, and the reason that has been is because the business wasn't compatible with the neighborhood they were proposing.
Right. So let's say I wanted to open, you know, something that's not appropriate in front of a mosque or a church. I think we had a situation with fireworks or something where you took the liberty of not issuing the provisional. I think if we develop some parameters, depending on the type of business, for the clerk's office to go by as well, that may help.
And if I can to add to what you're saying, Rick, is when we first started this, there wasn't any avenue to contact zoning or planning.
Right.
And what we had was, we had a provisional license that was planning. I don't recall what it was, but it wasn't appropriate for the neighborhood. So then we made a sheet that when somebody applies for a provisional license, they have to then go upstairs to the engineering office. And there's a sheet that I made, and it goes to planning and development. And basically what it says is, is any action required by either the planning or zoning board to allow this to continue so that we don't get mismatches. And that's worked out pretty well. But it certainly could be broadened.
Well, some municipalities have what they call a special use permit. So if somebody comes in and they want to open a certain type of business, first thing it does is it comes before the town or city board, then it gets referred to their planning board, and then it comes back to that board for the issuance of the permit. So as you can see, in some situations, it could take quite a while to get the permit that you need. But depending on the nature of the business, that may be the route that some people have to take.
Well, then, my suggestion in that regard, and I agree with you, is maybe before we issue a provisional, we run it by the Director of Development or something along those lines?
Well, I think we should, I think I should look at, you know, what some of the other municipalities are doing and report back to the board. That's number one. Number two, come up with a procedure, either tweaking what we already have, or coming up with a new rule, or a special use permit for certain types of businesses.
Keeping in mind that we're trying to expedite the opening.
Absolutely.
I mean, if a grocery store wants to open in an area that's designed to have a grocery store, and there's nothing negative received at the time of application that would indicate that we wouldn't allow that person, we're trying to get them up and running.
Right.
As best we can. Sometimes things develop over time, especially once the full process starts, and we get the paperwork back from ID, or we get the paperwork back to the fire marshal, or whomever, and it says, you know, this isn't going to work. But just keep in mind, these people know that the provisional license is only as good as time till either it's approved or not approved. They understand full well that they may not get, you know, the full business license. And if they've got stuff that they're hiding in the closet, perhaps, they know about, and it comes out, and the license is pulled, well, that's on them. You know, it's, you know, as long as we don't have a situation where, you know, you have, you know, a problem with moral safety of the public.
Well, the problem is, the incident over the weekend was of such a nature that it could have been a disaster and a tragedy and a liability to the city. And so what we have to weigh, in my opinion, but this council has to weigh, is whether the provisional license and allowing businesses to open, whatever the facade says on their application, it could be a grocery store, but it turns out that they're dispensing marijuana, or it's supposed to be rented for parties, yet we get up and there's 40 or 50.
It's a nightclub.
Yeah, nice, you know, shots fired. Does that far outweigh the allowing a business to open early to expedite their contribution to the community? I mean, we're dealing with an unknown. So I think what we have to weigh is, and on the extreme, is what happened on the weekend? Sufficient enough to disallow provisional licenses? Because that option or that event could have been a tragedy.
I could just chime in, though. Keep in mind, they did not have a provisional. They had a full-fledged license. So there's nothing to stop whether it happens during the provisional licensing stage or the full-blown permanent issuance. That situation, that scenario you just presented is on the table.
But according to their permit or their license, this all happened after 10:00 class.
See, now they're in violation of the actual business license. So that would be another reason. That doesn't need a rule change. That needs enforcement.
Right. Who's in charge of monitoring a temporary license when they do get a temporary license, before they get a regular permit? Who's there to watch over this to make sure?
Development, isn't it?
Building inspectors. Well, what we rely on often is, and when Officer Lieutenant Janowski was here, they would, and I had, if we had to respond, and I say "we" on top of the Lackawanna Police Department, had to respond to a business, I wanted copies of the reports so that we could see if what was going on was detrimental, and if they had to have their provisional pulled. And if they did, we would turn it over to code enforcement, and they would go down there and take it. It's happened very rarely. But again, it's the same as if it's a full-fledged business. Stuff can happen, develop over time, and, you know, the only difference is, the way it's worded now is the clerk pulls the provisional, whereas a regular, the council has to do it. My concern, though, and another reason we want to add to this section, is we don't want to just have the Director of Public Safety and the Director of Development with the power to shut down a provisional. I think they need the power to shut down a full-fledged license, awaiting official council action. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
So that, in this case, Director Wolf or whomever, you know, could have pulled a plug on him right that night.
Right.
And then it would have came before the meeting on Monday, and the council could have taken whatever action they deemed necessary. But to your point, it's valid. I mean, we've had stores that are supposed to be open until 10:00 AM or 10:00 PM. We get calls from the people that live in the area saying, you know, they're open until 12:01. So we would call a police desk and say, do us a favor, could you drive by there, see if they're opening, see if there's any activity, see if something's going on there. They're supposed to be shut down at 10:00. If so, we need a report so we can...
Right.
So there are some things in place, but everybody has to be on the same page. And I'll take some of that, because when Officer Janowski retired, they did not follow up with whoever took his spot, which I should have. Kukuleka, I believe, is not, let them know, listen, if you, you know, you respond to these things, we just want to know what's going on.
Oh, great points. Dean, anything on your end?
No, I just, the idea is that, I think that seeing we're having trouble with provisionals, you know, I mean, that's how apparently this all started, and they got permanent. But maybe we should just do a provisional just temporarily, kind of table it until we can look into the situation and come up with some better planning for this type of circumstance. But as the city clerk said, the issue here wasn't a provisional license, it was a building.
True, yeah.
You know what I mean?
I think we have to.
But we had many problems with other provisionals.
We have to look at our licensing.
That's the point.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
Our licensing and our use.
Is there a way to expedite or fast-track these applications so it doesn't take months to run through the process?
Well, I mean, I just had something in a different municipality where the town board met on one night, the planning board met on another night, you know, so it has to get referred, and then it has to get on their agenda, and then you have to meet there, and then it gets referred back to, you know, you're looking at two months.
Yeah.
At a minimum.
And what complicates it further is...
In my case, it was three or four, but...
When you get into one meeting a month, let's say theoretically, they apply the day after the last council meeting, the clock's just starting.
Right.
You know, and it's like, that's what we're trying to not have happen.
And, you know, sometimes these things just take time, depending on the nature of the business or what you're doing. You have to do some, you know, you might need an inspection. You know, if somebody wants to open a, you know, an entertainment area or something, you might want to have the inspector go there and make sure there's fire exits, fire alarms, this, that, blah, 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 to make sure the building is commensurate with the level of, or the type of activity that they're going to run out of that building.
So it would seem to me, and we'll again open this up to the rest of the council for your opinions, that the provisional license does serve a legitimate and useful purpose.
It's a way to get inspections done, too.
Yeah, and that particular part of the statute needs to be tweaked, and the language needs to be tightened down in particular to allow other, to other entities the authority to shut a business down, given the circumstances. That seems to me to be the way.
I mean, my bigger concern is, I know, years ago, I believe, there wasn't a, there was a big fire. Somebody had a band played at a, and they brought pyrotechnics and it was a...
It was great white down in Ohio, I think it was.
I thought it was Connecticut or Rhode Island or something.
Yeah, well, it could be.
And the place burned, and, you know, people couldn't get out because they lacked the exits because they didn't want people sneaking in. And there were a whole bunch of things. But I remember reading about that, and some of the issues that came up, or, you know, whether or not the municipality had granted permits to carry it out, and this and that. And, you know, I imagine there's a ton of lawsuits involved in that tragedy. But, you know, some of these things, you just have to take a prolonged procedure before you approve them.
And this was designed more like for the simpler businesses.
Right.
It wasn't designed for anything overly complicated, because that needs to go through the process.
Yeah. So let me see, you know, let me look around. Let's see what other municipalities are doing, and let's see if we can come up with some ideas that won't hurt, you know, 90% of our businesses. You know, we've been pretty fortunate not to have any
We're lucky.
gunplay in our city. I mean, it's been wonderful. And this was just horrendous. I mean, thank God nobody else got hurt. But yeah, I agree with you. Look at what other people, I'm sure they've ran into different problems, too, but maybe we could, you know, piggyback onto that.
All right. Anything by way of dialogue that we need to continue on, item number two?
No, so I know I've got some work cut out for me on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know, everything that comes through this council always seems to wind up in the law department anyways. And I had that experience when I was an assistant city attorney, and it was not fun.
Well, becoming a jack-of-all-trades and master at none, so they will continue.
Well, it's very helpful to us, so we thank you for that. All right, moving on to the agenda, item number three, work session to discuss the public speaking portion of the meeting. And this has come up a number of times, primarily because... Um, and this has come up a, a number of times primarily because uh, there seems to be a tendency for those requesting to speak, to speak on items other than the agenda topics, which is the, the, having of, of the public speak at all was designed to do. And that is designed, I think, to prevent what we've seen to some extent at these public hearings. And, you know, some individuals want to treat it as a social event. They're directing their comments to the department heads and on topics not even related to council business. That, that's not appropriate. The whole idea of talking on agenda items is the department heads are prepared for the agenda items and are up to speed on what the agenda items are about, and can reasonably comment if there are any questions from the public. What winds up happening though is, somebody brings up an issue out of the blue, and it's like, uh, gee, Mr. DeSantis, what do you know about this? Or, um, um, Ms. Jettnik, what do you know about that? And the, the answer, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time is, well, we didn't anticipate that to be, um, brought up today, and, and I'll have to get back to you on it. And in the meantime, it's, it's, it's distracting and it's not productive. And then when you, when there are some issues that are brought up, and we get into discussions and we think the answer has been given, and then there's, uh, it generates a private conversation between the person asking for time to be, to address the council, and another person in the room. And, and that goes on for, for what appears to be no legitimate reason. Um, and that was not what was intended by this provision. Conversations with department heads on other issues, and even on the particulars of the issue involved, may require a private conversation with a department head outside of the realm of the council meeting. The council meetings are intended for the city council to get through the city's business that's on the city agenda. On the other hand, it's, it's everyone's hope that the council wants to be transparent enough to allow for questions, but that, again, doesn't seem to be the intent, the intent of some people who come forward and ask for time to speak. And if you just want to have your voice heard on whatever topic you think you want to talk about, is not appropriate, in my opinion. I don't know if the council wants to continue because there are other jurisdictions that don't even allow for the public portion to comment during the meeting. And it's, it's to a point where I think it's, it's, it's an unwarranted distraction. Not having the public may prevent attacks on the record of any official or department head that would normally be unwarranted. So I think it's something for this council to, to weigh, to digest, and to consider whether or not the, we should continue with that portion of the city council meetings, and whether any additional safeguards or requirements should be put in place to guard against the, uh, the unwarranted use of the council's time and exposing, particularly to department heads, to unwarranted and unprepared and unanticipated questions. Any council members care to be heard on that?
Yeah, Mr. Council President. Um, that's why I'm having, um, starting last month, I had my Second Ward Community Meeting that, and anybody from the Second Ward is allowed to be there, discuss anything they want to discuss, ask questions. Instead of bringing them here, bring them to me at the council or at my meeting, and then I can bring them here or talk to the other council members, you know, beforehand, and find out the answers. That's why I have, that's why I'm having my meetings every month. So everybody's welcome to come from the Second Ward to my community.
Are other people outside the Second Ward welcome?
Um, well, I'm having, mine's for the Second Ward. And anybody's welcome if they want to come, if they have questions about, you know, um, if I can answer them outside the Second Ward.
The other thing, are council members available in case there's an appointment? Somebody who has a question on particular happenings in their ward, to come to City Hall or whenever it's appropriate, or wherever it's appropriate, to meet with those individuals outside of the council.
Sure. Councilman Moretti came to my last meeting. Uh, the next meeting, Mayor Ifallow will be there with, uh, John Wolfe, Director of Public, of, uh, Public Safety. So any questions you have then, those are, that's where you want to ask those questions, not here at the city council meeting.
So do you have a position at this time, and, and maybe we need more time to think about it, uh, as to whether or not we should keep the public, the, the public's invitation to ask questions?
About those agenda items, I believe, yeah.
Okay, so the, the overwhelming majority of them, the questions that come up from people who ask to speak have nothing to do with the agenda.
Right.
So we...
So it should be just about...
So it becomes an embarrassment for us to shut them down and say, listen, it's not an agenda, uh, agenda item. Uh, do, so what do you do? Do we just shut them down then?
Well, I mean, it's in, it's in the rules, right?
It, it is in the rules, but nobody follows them. Now, you, you have John Ingram president, he sent a letter with certain items, and that, that was put on the agenda. So, you know, we're grateful for that because everybody now has noticed what's going to be asked and legitimate areas of concern.
Right.
And it gives the department heads an opportunity to prepare for the questions, whether it affects public safety, a legal question, DPW, whether it's a sign, a speed bump, or whatever. You know, not, not to, to criticize or to moan against anyone, these are public meetings. I think the public should have the opportunity, provided it's done with severity and, and, and professionally. But, you know, one of the issues is, or one of the problems I, we have is, the department heads, they've worked a full day. Okay, the council may have worked a half-day, or they're retired, or whatever, they come to the meeting. The department heads have worked all day long, and then they either come back or they stay here for a six-thirty meeting, and then after the work session, sometimes the meetings don't start till after seven. So for a lot of us, you know, we're going on twelve, thirteen hours of work already, and then questions come up about something we're not prepared for, or we just...
There's a lack of ability.
Yeah. So, you know, and then, and then people have a tendency to, to, to bark louder or bite because they're irritated. So, um, I think by reaching out to the city or the council president, even, you know, everybody does stuff by email now. So why can't they, if there's questions they want on the agenda, maybe they can email the council or, or their, their local representative beforehand. Or if it's not on the agenda and they have a question, just tell them politely, we'll address that at the next council meeting. Tell us what the question is, and then put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Then, then we can make a, um, a respectable or reasonable response to accommodate that individual without shutting them down, so to speak.
Good point.
Need anything on your end?
I think he answered everything I would have said, and I think that's, the city attorney said is perfect. People should know, out there should know, that if you do want to come in front of us, in front of the council here, that just either email or send a letter and get it putting on, on the docket, so...
Just, just a reminder though, and that process is already in place. I mean, just like department heads have a time, it applies to the citizens. And that is typically, not always, because sometimes the meeting's out on Monday, but the typical Monday meeting, they have till Wednesday noon.
Right.
And the way this, the section's written, it doesn't account for email because there wasn't email at the time.
Right.
But I obviously take email requests because it's supposed to be assigned. I use the email as a signature, and I also use the time the email was sent as the timestamp for the office. There's no reason to stamp it again. And they go on there if I get them on time.
What if they don't sign them?
If they don't sign, I take them because they're sending it from an email address.
What if it's anonymous?
If it's anonymous, I tend not to. Uh, because it, it, the part that hasn't changed is you're still supposed to provide your name and address. You can do that on an email. Uh, so if you don't want to, if you want to just throw shots and, and, and put stuff in there, and you guys know, I have sent you guys stuff saying, what do you want to do with this?
Exactly.
Because this really doesn't meet, however, if it's something that's near and dear or that should be addressed for the public good, we'll kind of, we'll get it on there. But maybe the people don't know what's required. But it's supposed to have name, address, contact information. The email obviously is, is good enough contact information for the most part. Still need a name and address though.
And, and there's, there's two, two things along those same lines. And, and that is, there seems to be a, a question as to what we as council members are allowed or permitted to do in our interaction with department heads. Uh, we, we've received notice that we're very limited in what we're permitted to do with department heads. And to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense since we're part of the face of Lehigh.
Can I, can I address that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know, as the council knows, you're the legislative body of the city. You draft the laws, the ordinances, the, the rules that the mayor and her staff go by. The mayor's responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. But at least this mayor, and I know mayors in the past, Jeff Somansky, they've always had an open-door policy. And, and I think Mayor Ifallow, being a former council member, you know, has kind of worn both sets of shoes, so she knows what it's like to be on both sides of the fence. And certainly she doesn't want to restrict council members' right to come up to the city to talk to a department head about an issue that may affect their ward or the city overall, um, or about the status of a grant or something like that. But I think it's, number one, I think it's courtesy just to let the mayor know. And number two, um, to possibly make an appointment if, if possible with the department head. You know, we all, no, nobody wants to turn somebody away, especially a council person. But, you know, there's days when we're working on things, and, and, you know, I've had to cut people off in the past or, or say, oh, can I get back to you, or whatever. But to the extent possible, uh, uh, and, and I know, you know, Tony DeSantis is, is, is another one. He's great at dealing, you know, if you called him tomorrow, Fred, and you said, hey, Tony, you know, somebody's complaining about a broken sign here or whatever. Tony will go out the next day and fix it. And he doesn't have to ask the mayor's permission, and he knows what he can do and what he can't do. Uh, but we do have some new department heads, and we're still kind of integrating uh, those individuals and those departments with city government. So we've got our own hiccups. But if there's anything major, obviously, and you think the mayor should know about it, you should at least ask or, or let her know that you're going to talk to somebody about it. You know, little things, like I said, about, you know, picking up tires, or cutting someone's lawn, or complaints about a certain property, those go right to the building department, or to Tony, or to Director of Development. I don't think anybody's got an issue with that.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
And obviously, we want to do as good of a job for the council as we do for the mayor. So that's all I think, I think that's all we're trying to say here. But if there is something that you want done, I think as long as it's done as a request, we'll certainly try to accommodate the council to, to the extent possible.
Well, I, I think, and, and we're all very appreciative that Mayor Ifallow does have an open-door policy. It does respond quickly. My point in bringing this up though is the public doesn't understand.
Right.
If they're contacting, contacting their ward council member, there's another layer to that, and there's another step, which means that we as council members now have to take that request or that issue to the mayor's office, or direction from the mayor's office to the department head. So that adds another delay possibly, not on every occasion, but the public is not aware of that.
Right.
But we as council members are.
Right.
And, and so there are times when maybe that isn't always possible. And, and we're thankful that we have a mayor that is responsive to all of us along those lines. So I, I think the public needs to be made aware of that. Either, even though you're calling your elected representative, there's still a layer, another step involved.
Well, I think that's incumbent upon the council person to tell that individual, hey, what you're talking about is something that, that I specifically don't have the authority to do, but I will talk to the appropriate department head or to the mayor. Um, again, if, a, a lot of times, if it's a, um, if it's a DPW issue, I don't think anybody's got any problems, you know, cleaning up a mess that the garbage truck left, or that, um, somebody left at their house when they moved out and they need immediate response because there's a potential for, you know, the wind to blow it, or rats, or whatever. You know, those things I know Tony's very good about, and, and, and I don't think anybody um, would criticize the council person for talking directly to Tony's department or to the building department to get that done immediately. Um, but if it's something more, you know, you know, can you construct this here? Can you move this here, do that? Then I think that's something that the council person has to tell the member of the public. I'll bring it up at the next council meeting, or I'll get a memo to the mayor. We'll put it on the agenda, we'll discuss it, and if it's appropriate, we'll do it. But I can't, you know, I can't move a traffic sign without doing a traffic study. Or I can't, you know, put a speed bump out, uh, without going through the council and, and having some type of traffic safety study done, things like that.
Yeah. And, and I, I think, to, to, to piggyback on that, I think the public needs to know and appreciate the fact that even though they're requesting this item be done, the mayor's responsible for the everyday operation of the city. And sometimes those requests don't fit in with the work schedule of everybody for any given occasion.
And sometimes we have to, like, so we get calls about people complaining about high grass. Well, I can't just go and cut the lawn, or we, the city can't just go and cut the lawn. We have to send that person a notice, then we have to send the inspector out. We have to issue a summons.
Right.
And we have to give them so many hours or days or whatever to get the work done. So there's some follow-up things. But, you know, some, you know how it is, the, I, I, you know, when I want something done, I expect my staff to get it done immediately.
And we all do.
So we all do. And especially now with fax and emails and, and text messages, you know, communication's a lot quicker, so we want things done quicker. I think it's our, it's human nature now. But unfortunately, some things have to be done procedurally, and they take longer.
Right. And, and that's why we have elected officials. But, and, and let me raise this issue, issue two, uh, which is, I think is pertinent to item number three. And, and that is, we don't have a sergeant-at-arms. So we have, I have been contacted, as a result of what took place the last meeting, where the video camera was struck, either intentionally or by accident, if, whether or not we should have security, security at our, our council meetings.
We had Mr. Joyce here.
Well, he's downstairs, right? And, and how did we contact him?
Well, yeah.
Versus having somebody in, in the room in case there's something that needs to be addressed right away.
Don't the people that come in, don't they go through the metal detector? When you guys came to the council meeting last time, you had to go through the metal detector.
Well, and, and, and that's all well and good, but, but my comments are being directed primarily at, at somebody who, who just, um...
Years ago, I know we had a couple people that sometimes got irate or did some...
It was at the last meeting too also, let's be honest about it. It happened then too.
Right.
So the question isn't whether somebody's put in danger, it's what should people be subjected to? And what should the council member and department heads be subjected to? So I'm just throwing out what was offered to me as the council president, whether or not the council should have security. And I'll open that up to the council members.
Right, and that's for you to decide.
Yeah. I'm sorry, this isn't open to the public.
Yeah, I can say that.
Yes.
What I'd like to do is, uh, first of all, I want to apologize for the last council meeting. I, I took a subject and I drew it out, and I probably could have met with the gentleman one-on-one to carry on that conversation. But understand, it was over two and a half years of going through this, about this thing, and being misinformed constantly. Uh, the ball was being thrown back and forth, back and forth, and it, and it becomes frustrating. Uh, you know, I've owned businesses, and, and I wouldn't put up with anything like that in my business that if somebody's doing it to me, I'll find a different source. So that was probably the reason why, I mean, I get a little upset over a couple issues that are going on in the city that have been repetitive, been, again, misinformed, and, and giving the opinion from that person about different things about that, which nobody's looked into. There was no study done. So how could you make these, and this is what really irritates me, uh, to say something, yeah, yeah, well, that's because of the, the, let's give example, the road's too narrow. Really? Did you go measure it?
Right.
I, I mean, visually... I mean, visually, I don't see it. So, you know, this is where my frustration comes from. But again, I shouldn't have did what I did and I apologize to the whole council for pushing that too far. I could have, like I said, could have had a personal conversation with the gentleman and expressed my opinions there.
Well, sometimes I think it's good for the public to hear that, that the issues that may, that the public has to deal with, especially on that issue of the traffic light on Abbott and Ridge, people need to know that that item is front and center in your eyes as well as in the councils and in the department heads that are responsible for addressing those issues. So it's one thing being passionate about a topic, in my opinion, versus someone who's just either putting on a show or doesn't feel they're being treated fairly and act out or just being plain rude. So I think there's a difference and we try to keep that in mind. And our city clerk just pointed out, Section 5-34 is entitled Enforcement of Decorum, Designation Duties of Sergeant-at-Arms. We do have the authority to designate a sergeant-at-arms. And that individual will be responsible for ejecting anybody who's not, whose actions are not appropriate. So I think, I think maybe we should, it's in our packet, we should review that, consider it and try to determine whether or not someone is appropriate for that position or whether we need that position at all. But I, for one, don't think and don't appreciate the form of a council meeting, given established rules of decorum, established rules of conduct, established rules of topics to be discussed, to those individuals who just ignore them. And if necessary, I think maybe security in the future or sergeant-at-arms might be considered. Dean or Carl, I don't know if you have anything you want to add on that topic. But I'm to a point now, in my age and in my career and my experience, that the public fails to understand that we're human beings too. In many instances, people don't understand it, they don't appreciate it. They think their topic is the only topic that we're faced with having to entertain, discuss, resolve, and these sometimes veiled threats of people coming en masse to the council meetings to demonstrate their dissatisfaction with things that sometimes aren't even within our control, I think is inappropriate. Carl, anything on your end?
No, the last meeting was my first council meeting with the open, you know, open, yeah, live and that. So let me see what happens at the next one.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Rick or John, anything on your end?
I'll send a, I'll talk to Chief Packer regarding bringing a patrol officer up.
We're not requesting one at this time and we're going to consider the sergeant-at-arms option.
Okay.
But if things do continue as have been in the past, I think we need to enforce a measure of decorum.
I agree. Couldn't that be used to walk yourself?
It might be. We'll have to look at that. All right.
No, I kind of expected that.
Very good.
All right, if I can just add a procedural change we're going to do because we did have some comments on the sign-in procedure here at the council meetings, based on where the camera is and the sheet on the desk.
Yeah.
Viewing was not, that's probably R-rated when people were signing up. So we're going to put the podium immediately behind the camera from now on, with the signing sheet there. So that, and then somebody will hand us the signing sheet so that they're not at the table in front of the camera. Just in case you're wondering why the podium's been moved.
And just as an aside, Gene O'Garry, who's our IT person, tries to accommodate our needs and our quirks and above and beyond, and we've been very grateful for that, Gene. Thank you. All right, unless there's anything else, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Morano, second by Moretti to adjourn the meeting. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yeah.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 3-0. Thanks, everybody.